Good morning and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council's resumed meeting for our budget hearings. I am Teresa Kell Smith. I'm the Chair of Hearings and Policy. The Department will hear updates from this, for this hearing, from the Office of the Mayor. And first, I'd like to invite, while Mayor Ganey is at the table with us, I'm going to turn to our Budget Director first to, I want to thank you, Mayor Ganey, for joining us and with your team, and you can introduce him. Turn to our Budget Director first for a little update.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Today, we're going to talk, start with the Mayor's Office. And the mission of the Office of the Mayor is to provide leadership, strategic direction, and administrative oversight to all aspects of the city government operations, and to develop and implement policy reflective of the goals and priorities of the citywide community. A quick overview, the Office of the Mayor contains the following offices: the Executive Office, the Office of Equal Protection, Office of Communications, Office of Neighborhood Services, Office of Business Diversity, the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, the Office of Workforce Development, Youth and Education, and the Office of Financial Empowerment. A quick summary of the positions, there will be a total, there's projected to be a total of 44 full-time positions in the 2024 budget, which is a reduction of one from last, from 2023. There's an upgrade of Communications Manager to Digital Communication Specialist. There will be two less 3-1-1 call center representatives, but that will be counteracted by an addition of three part-time employees. There's an upgrade of Digital Engagement Strategist to Coordinator, a swap of Special Initiatives Coordinator for a Youth Coordinator, and one new Financial Empowerment Manager. Overall, there is a increase of about $74,000, and also a 4% salary increase for staff, which counteracts the only 2% increase in 2023. Those positions are made up of both non-union and ASME 2719. A quick summary of non-personnel changes in the 2024 budget, excluding personnel costs, there is a $344,223 or 33% increase in the Mayor's non-personnel budget. This is due primarily to one-time cost for workforce hub tracker at $170,000, and the inclusion of $300,000 annually for city cuts. Something that you started. There's also $120,000 being shifted from the Mayor's budget to the City Clerk's budget for ASL services, because we are the primary users of, of the ASL services as we have now. Thank you. And there is a disparity study of $200,000 that was budgeted in 2023, and it is budgeted again in 2024. And lastly, for capital projects, there is ADA compliance for $300,000, and the Mayor's Public Service Grants at $100,000, and those are both Community Development Block grant funding.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. And I want to thank Rhea Price also, Deputy Director, for also, for preparing a lot of materials.
She does a ton of work.
Yeah. Mayor Ganey, I'm going to turn it over to you to make some opening statements and introduce your team.
Good morning. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate you having me and me being here. Today, we will answer any questions about the budget that anybody may have. I have my Deputy Mayor, my Deputy Chief of Staff here to be able to answer any questions. And we look forward to a, a healthy conversation. We know when we both work together, we're going to do great things for this city. So I just want to appreciate you. As you know, I do have a couple other previous engagements that I have to get to, but I wanted to come and say thank you. Wanted to come and say thank you for having me the other day to be able to give this, the budget speech. Secondly, I just want to thank you for the way you've worked with my team in the past to ensure that we can do things to move this city forward. So we're very grateful, and I'm leaving you in very, very, very capable hands. And you already know if there's anything that you need to directly ask me, you know how to get in touch with me, you know we'll work it from there.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And I do want to thank you. I want to tell you, the other day, I was watching you give your address, your budget address, and that teleprompter was running so fast, I honestly don't know how you kept up with them, thinking, that thing is fast. So.
Yeah, it was pretty fast, but um, you know, we were, we were able to improvise what we needed to improvise. The key was to get the message to the people that we want to make it safe, welcoming, and thriving. And as long as we got that across and we could, and we can demonstrate our work, then the rest of it was just what it was going to be.
And there's a lot of things in the budget that I think Council's very supportive of, myself included, but there's some things I want to work together on to address, and I think we have a good start, starting conversation with some of those.
Absolutely. And I just want to say again, thank you. I appreciate you as always, and I'll leave you to my two top people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You too. Thank you, Mayor. Did you want to give any?
I'll just introduce ourselves real quickly. Jake Paulak, Deputy Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Felicity Williams, Deputy Chief of Staff to Mayor Ganey.
So I'll let, I'll let Felicity lead off on any summary notes you want to give about the Mayor's Office budget.
Absolutely. Thank you, JP. You will see in the summary that was provided, that there have not been a lot of changes made from last year's budget to this year's budget. Largely, the changes that were made were to account for what we've learned over the last year, to adjust for the expenses that we see going forward as it relates to our disparity study, as it relates to the ASL, shifting over to the City Clerk's office, our work around the workforce hub tracker, those you see, and as was summarized, the majority of the increase is in non-personnel expenses and changes. So we are, love to take any questions that you may have, and look forward to engaging with you on that.
Okay. I do want to mention that we are joined by Councilwoman Barb Warwick online. Are there any other members online? Okay. And I will say we're also, Bob Charlin is watching, Councilwoman-elect Bob Charlin is watching via Zoom. Yeah, he's not in the audience, via Zoom. So people are sending me text messages. I'm going to first turn it over to Councilwoman Warwick for any questions first, and then I have a few. Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, hi. Sorry I'm not there today.
Good morning. No, thank you for always being, thank you for always participating.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I don't, I mean, I don't have any major questions. I guess I do, so we did talk a little bit, I do want to say, first of all, that the Neighborhood Services Team, they've really been doing a great job. It really means a lot to the communities in my district. I know, you know, Greenfield, Lincoln Place, Hazelwood, like to have, to have somebody from the Mayor's Office as, as a regular presence at community meetings. It, it really does mean a lot. And, and I like having that as well, like for, for my office, just to kind of know that we are, that, that my team is hearing it, the Mayor's team is hearing it, so whatever's coming in, and that it helps us kind of work together, you know, when we have things that need to be addressed. So, so thank you for that. And I guess the only real question I have is a little bit around, the city cuts program was mentioned. We did have this year, I mean, again, in, in my office, we, we got a lot of calls about, about city cuts. So I guess I was sort of wondering what your takeaway from that was from this year. I guess the one concern that, if I understand it correctly, is that we're providing the service on, like as individuals request it, depending on if they are elderly or have disabilities. I'm, I'm wondering maybe if there might be a way to adjust that to perhaps operate it by, by neighborhood? I could maybe see something like that with Snow Angels too, where instead of addressing like a single house based on someone calling in and asking, if we were like, hey, let's take a look at this street, right? Or this, or you know, something like that, like sort of using our city cuts in, in that way to provide the service that maybe that's neighborhood-based or a little bit more equity-based than just age? Because my, my concern is that there may be folks who are, you know, where we're like coming out and cutting the grass for folks who, who probably could, could afford to cut the grass themselves. That, that's, that's my only, my only question in terms, if you want to address that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. So yes, we have learned a lot, having operated the program last year. We are looking to make some changes in the program in the upcoming year, particularly as it relates to what you've already mentioned, what are our equity measures and how we determine, how we identify the, the households, the streets, the neighborhoods, so on and so forth, in which we would provide this free service, free to the, to the homeowner, obviously. We intend, it's a very, and one of the things that we also learned was that it is a very intensive program to run that well, both on, in terms of securing the individuals, the contractors who'd be, who would be providing the service, as well as the coordination between that and the delivery of the actual service. And so we do not have a dedicated staffer for that currently, but we are proposing to do is to RFP this out to a nonprofit that would have experience in this area and in this work to help us better inform, manage, and run this program. So it's absolutely something that we could work with you on, as well as any others in collaboration, to how we revamp that program to really ensure that those public dollars are going to, as you said, those who really are in need of this city service.
If I could add, just briefly, I think another thing that we've identified over the past year is the need for closer coordination between this and the other similar activities we do right there. We have city cuts, which provides a service to city residents who need assistance with that. We've also got our land care program through the Department of Finance, which manages properties in our portfolio. The URA has properties that they manage for grass cutting, and then we've got Clean and Lean conducted by the Department of Public Works. And we found, over the past year, that there will be instances where their schedules for those really four different programs don't sync up. And so, you know, we send someone to cut a lot here, you know, two lots on the same street, and, you know, with one lot in between them that's also vacant, and that one doesn't get cut that day because it's under different ownership, right? So, and that's obviously pretty confusing and frustrating to the public who don't understand the reason behind that. So we're looking to improve coordination across all of these land management services in the coming year.
Okay, great. Thanks. And then also, just, I know that, you know, as we're heading into the winter months, something that I've always, just as we're talking about it, I know that Snow Angels, now I know that's a volunteer-based program, but just to sort of point out that, you know, if you have, it's great to, to, to clear one sidewalk right in front of one house, but that doesn't enable a resident to walk down the street, you know what I mean? Like, okay, they can get out to their car perhaps, so I don't know if there's a way to kind of wrangle the Snow Angel volunteers to maybe come and pick a whole street, you know, or, or go, go around the neighborhood, say like, look, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna shovel all the, you know, like this street is particularly bad, we're getting calls from residents, and just come out and actually shovel that whole street. I don't know how much snow we're gonna get, we never know that, but it's just a, just a thought, and how that program might be a little bit more effective than just sort of, you know, here and there, getting folks sidewalks shoveled.
Yes. Councilwoman Warwick, we do have way more demand for that program than we have in the past had volunteers. And so, in looking towards this season, that was one of the things that we had identified, that we need to put additional time, energy, effort in the recruitment process of how we bring on volunteers, partnering with community-based organizations, partnering with, where there may be youth sports leagues, so on and so forth, that we could do some coordination there around that volunteer work. So we are working, thinking along those same lines as you are, and for this year's program, looking at how we can improve our recruitment process, and then similarly to what, you know, JP said around the city cuts program, improving that coordination and that alignment there as well.
Yeah. And I would definitely recommend reaching out to, because I know that Pitt, Pitt is very good about sort of having these big, you know, big groups of volunteers coming out, doing neighborhood cleanups and that kind of stuff, so. And I think they've actually also done some, some Snow Angel work as well, so. At any rate, thank you, thank you so much for, for all the work that you're doing, and, you know, and also, I mean, I know, like, just the budget in general, very happy about the traffic calming and, and a number of other things. So thanks for that. And again, sorry, sorry I'm not in the chambers today. Okay, thanks.
And just for the record, we are, the forecast is for a relatively mild winter, so knock on wood.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. And I have some questions, some are my own, so I may not, and some are not, so I may not have follow-ups for some of them, but for the city cuts programs, I do want to address that, because that was actually something I started in District 2, but actually, Dandeezy started it in Sheridan first, before, and so when I got here, it was already up and running. We expanded it to District 2, and we started getting so many phone calls from across the city, people asking for it. So what we did was we followed the CDBG guidelines, and it are people that are veterans, elderly, or disabled, senior citizens, veterans, and disabled people. And so that's why there's no, like, we don't ask what your income is, because that's not the CDBG guidelines, it goes according to those, because in, for the public, CDBG is eligible in certain areas, but there's certain, the criterias they don't follow, or, you know, make people eligible for, are as being as a senior veteran or disabled. So for that reason, we just, we just followed that program. And I do want to say that I think that if you're going to take it outside of City Council or outside of your office, I think I'm really considering putting it back into, under City Council, so we can do our own offices in our own areas. Okay. And Councilwoman Gross just joined us. So I would just say that, because I'd really like to have some discussion with you about that, because I don't want to see another nonprofit doing stuff that, you know, going around what we're supposed to be overseeing. But I will say that that program hired, at least in the past few years, has hired more minority female contractors than, than anybody had ever anticipated it was going to do. So, and it's helped a lot of people, so I think it was, it was a really worthwhile program, I think it was great. I want to thank the people who started, and it was actually the late Sam Palambini working with Dandeezy, and a guy named Sean Moss, who owns Maust Landscaping, M-A-U-S-T. He owns Maust Landscaping, and he's not part of the program now, but he started it, but he never, I don't know if he didn't apply, I don't know what, but he's not part of it. But, um, so I have some other questions, but I'm going to let Councilwoman Gross ask hers, and then I'll come back to mine, because when you mentioned about volunteers and the sports leagues and stuff, that also triggered a gazillion questions I have, so. Councilwoman Gross, did you have anything?
Madam President, thank you so much. I apologize, I'm on the move, and I'm not really someplace where I can talk, but I was listening into the conversation, and I'll, I'll have to hold my questions at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So when you mentioned about the sports leagues and the country, you know, something Councilwoman Warwick and I have actually been talking a lot about, and I think Councilman Coghill previously, we talked about the, doing something like similar to Big League and city sports, but including more criteria for the football programs, because we're seeing a lot of things happening in the community where maybe it's not in the best interest of the kids or the community itself. So is there any talk of, or thought of maybe expanding those programs, like to include, you know, football, and give some criteria, and give some incentives, those types of things, sort of like what we did with Big League and now city sports?
Yeah. There, we, we have discussed ways to work, you know, more closely with the org, as, as you know, the youth football system in Pittsburgh presently is not administered by the city, right? And in last year's budget, we added a position in Parks and Rec to support our work on all youth, youth sports, including building stronger connections and relationships with, with the football programs. I don't know presently exactly, you know, where that stands. That would frankly be a very good question for the Parks and Rec hearing, I think Director Vargas could share some insights there. But yes, we want to build stronger and closer relationships there and do what makes sense for the kids. Just on, the, the connection here was reaching out to youth sports organizations to see if their players would, in a sort of an organized way through the team, be Snow Angels. We've seen that in Homewood.
Yeah. It happens in my district too sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. You know, the, so in some instances, the teams, you know, through their coaches, agree to do that as a kind of neighborhood service, and we just like to build upon that.
Yeah. What they're good at in my district is helping me with the islands and the plantings and things like that. And so, so, I mean, and cleaning up the parks. So I think, I think that that's a worthwhile, something to look into, but I just overall have, would like to talk more about what we're doing with the kids and the, and these athletic associations. Someone asked me to ask this, the disparity program, the study, what is it actually, what exactly are you looking for if not salaries, they wonder what the $400,000 is for?
So the funding that has been allocated, that is split into two different chunks. One, we had allocate, we had requested, and in the budget for this year, $200,000 to complete the study. Due to a number of factors, so for example, the changing legal landscape, the affirmative action case that was decided at the Supreme Court level, we took a pause on moving that project forward towards RFP. We've been working with a consultant on that project. Waited, we waited till that decision came out, it came out very narrowly tailored, no one was sure what, how broad the decision was going to be. Based on our consultant's feedback and guidance, he said for us to proceed forward with the disparity study. And so we have been working with him, with our law department, with procurement, and with our Office of Business Diversity, on how we are going to advance that disparity study. So the first $200,000, and it will not be the, the full $200,000, we actually will not need that much, will go towards supporting our continued work with our consultant that we are already under contract with. The $200,000 that has been allocated for next year, we will RFP to bring on a consultant to actually perform the study. The consultant that's working with us right now is working with us on, one, developing that RFP, because it is quite complex. We are looking to do a multi-jurisdictional disparity study, so not just the City of Pittsburgh's data, but also our local authorities, and we are looking to incorporate the, the data from some of our corporate partners as well. The city's disparity study has not been completed in such a long time that we are not able to do an update. We have to do a brand-new, new-generation disparity study for the City of Pittsburgh. And then we are also working with him on how we can prepare our current systems and procurement process, so that once the RFP is released, we secure a consultant, they give us recommendations, we are able to implement those successfully in the City of Pittsburgh.
And just to take maybe one step further back than that, a disparity study is a, an analysis of the barriers to minority and women and veteran-owned businesses in securing contracts. So it's not about, it's not about salaries, it's not looking at our internal workforce. There was a, an analysis of that done a few years ago by HR that is still being utilized to set salaries. This is looking at, it's legally required in order to have and to justify MWDBE procurement goals and set-asides, and, you know, the current study was completed in the 90s, its legal basis is somewhat shaky, given the long time since, since it was, since we've completed a study. So this has been something we've needed for quite a while. I remember first having conversations about an update to this as far back as 2016. And it's, it's important to justify what we establish as our goals for minority procurement, women-owned business procurement, veteran procurement.
For comparison, industry standard is that this should be completed every five years. So you can see that we are way out of compliance, and so there's a lot of work that needs to be done to, to bring our city up to speed on what are the latest understandings, what is the current data and status of MWBE procurement.
And.
Madam President, may I, may I chime in?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I apologize, but like I said, I was listening in, and I, I am very interested in this question, so thank you for asking it. And on the contracting, I am curious, what is our total volume in dollars of contracting? And so I'm sure we're measuring contracts awarded to MW, you know, the MBE, MWBE, as we've done at some of the other authorities, and I'm glad we're having a conversation here for the city, but I'm also curious in the dollar volume, total dollars, and then how we're measuring by who's getting the contracts?
So I'll defer the total volume to JP, and then I can talk a little bit about how we're, we're measuring.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we've ever actually looked at that number in quite that way, Councilwoman. It's an interesting question. I can certainly get you an answer, but I don't have it off the top of my head. You know, the vast majority of our contracts are.
Yeah, so we have a $680 million budget. How much of that is expended in contracts?
Understood. I would say you're referencing there the operating budget, which it's a relatively small percentage, but I don't know the, the number. Almost entirety of our capital budget, of course, is, is done via contract for construction, and that would be the larger share. But I will produce those numbers and, and have them sent to Council.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification also. Okay, so we're, we're especially looking at, I, I do think there is some operating budget as well, and of course, we know that the majority of it is in payroll, but I'm really interested to see the breakout then, comparing total volume and operating than total volume of capital. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And Councilwoman, just to answer your question about measuring, so we have, as you know, the Equal Opportunity Review Commission created by 177A in the city code, it's also regulated, but regulated by 177A, that is staffed by our Office of Business Diversity in the Mayor's Office. They review not all city contracts, but city contracts that are professional services in excess of $50,000, and city contracts that are construction services in excess of $250,000. They go have a process with a good faith effort checklist, where they require prime contractors to go through a process demonstrating how they have attempted to reach the city's MWBE goals on their projects. We go so far as asking them to provide the people that they have contacted, letters showing that they have contacted them, why those individuals were not able to participate on the project, if they were not able to participate on the project. Those applications go before the Equal Opportunity Review Commission, which is made up of individuals appointed by the Mayor's Office. They are not city staff, they are city residents appointed by the Mayor's Office, who then review those proposals, they have presentations from the prime contractors to review and approve their MWBE participation. That is our, our current way of doing that. We are also undergoing a procurement modernization initiative to look at how not only we improve our MWBE participation as subcontractors, which is what the Equal Opportunity Review Commission is really focused on, but also how we improve MWBE participation as prime contractors as well.
Thank you. I'm sorry for bugging you, Madam President, but thank you for letting me.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. And we are also joined by Councilwoman Bobby Wilson, and Councilwoman Coghill was in, he ran to get reading glasses, and he'll be right back in. So Councilwoman Wilson, do you have any questions?
Sorry, I missed the first initial part of this. I missed the mayor apparently as well. I was touring the Public Safety Center downtown, the substation, and then also was just, there was some media that wanted to know more about it. I thought it was a good opportunity to talk about the good work that, you know, Public Safety is doing, your office is doing, and then what Council President and, you know, Councilman here were kind of the new price on that will, I can let you elaborate, but I'm explaining why we're late.
Oh, okay, good, good. For good reason.
Anyway, always for a good reason. But with that, just wanted to.
I didn't know everybody knew already.
What's that?
I didn't realize everyone knew already.
Word travels fast.
Yeah, that's good. I didn't know. I'm sorry.
I think it's a good thing, you know?
Yeah. No, I just didn't know people knew.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you.
So, anyway, I wanted to just, if you could tell me, you know, with the additional staff that was out of last year, so the increase is minimal here, but the additional staff that was out last year, what were you able to gain with that staff?
Well, that is a broad question. Where would I start? So talking about the additional staff that we have gained in Neighborhood Services. They have knocked, for example, 10,000 doors to make sure that folks know about upcoming engagements and activities with the city, and their opportunities really to give input as we are a participatory government system. So that is so critical and important, it's a, it's a big value of the mayor, how we engage those who don't already regularly come to City Council hearings, or, or budget meetings, or project meetings, that we are increasing and expanding those who are giving input on our projects. So our Neighborhood Services Team has been able to do that. Our Neighborhood Services Team has also been able to increase and improve resolution of 3-1-1 tickets by integrating 3-1-1 into the Mayor's Office, really connecting what is coming through to people on the phones, to our outreach team, working directly on the ground there with them. In terms of our investments in our communications team, that has also improved our ability to have coordinated messaging for the city. to have coordinated messaging for the city of Pittsburgh, to ensure that we are connecting all of the different individuals who were siloed in departments with the support of a communications leader, with the support of other communications team members to improve how we get communications out about city work that is occurring. In terms of additional staff that we have added to our Office of Equal Protection, so working on how we improve our ability to serve individuals who are, who have a disability to access inclusion in the city, to resolve challenges and issues that they may have, connecting them to resources, they're working on a resource directory for those individuals. Our compliance coordinator there, improving resolution of paid sick leave and our enforcement of doing that work, working with our disruptive properties process as well. I'm trying to think through some of the other team members of that.
Just on a couple of them. So the one is the Neighborhood Services. So, I know when you came in, there was one or two positions?
Three.
All of the, all of the positions that had previously been the Office of Community Affairs were eliminated, or taken from the mayor's office in the 2022 budget. So we did, using existing budget funds, hire three individuals by eliminating other positions, essentially.
So, in that, in that period, you weren't able to make all the neighborhood meetings?
Correct.
And then now, I don't have a tally, but I'm just wondering, like, from your side, do you feel like, are you able to make all the neighborhood meetings with the amount of, how many, how many are in the Neighborhood Services?
So we have our Neighborhood Services Senior Manager, we have an Engagement Manager, we have a Digital Engagement Coordinator, we have an Infrastructure Engagement Specialist who leads infrastructure engagements, taking that work and burden away from our department folk who are technicians. We want them to focus, if you're an engineer, we want you to focus on engineering, we want you to focus on those things, and then leave how we're going to engage and work with the public up to our engagement team around those projects, right? Making sure everyone's specialties are where they should be. And then we also have a social worker on that team, as well as three community liaisons. So that makes up the Neighborhood Services team, along with then the 3-1-1 call center. We integrated those existing employees into the Neighborhood Services teams. It is one of our larger teams in the mayor's office. Are we able to attend every single community meeting in all 90 neighborhoods every month? No. But we do have a regular presence in many of our neighborhoods and communities, even if we are not able to touch a community every month, then we have some communities that we are able to touch once a quarter, right, every other month, and we make sure that we are reaching out to touch them. It may not be every month, but in different ways that we are engaging them. So that's certainly improved, going from three individuals trying to engage 90, our residents in 90 neighborhoods, to now this expanded team to engage the rest of our residents in the neighborhoods.
Now, how many of those individuals are, and you mentioned infrastructure person, everything, but I heard three, there's three people that are designated to go, three plus the manager are designated to go to meetings?
So those three community liaisons plus the manager do have a portfolio of neighborhoods across the city that they are divided amongst, that they do have a regular presence in those communities, whether that be as a monthly, quarterly, so on and so forth. But the Infrastructure Engagement Specialist also does engagement in the neighborhoods, particularly around infrastructure projects, which we know are a big portion of the work that we do here as a city. So it's not just those three plus the Engagement Manager. Our Neighborhood Services Senior Manager also is attending community meetings and out and active, Rebecca Ranallo, you all are very familiar with, an Infrastructure Engagement Specialist as well.
Yeah, it's about five people who were doing the majority of the standing community meetings, right? And then there are other members of the team more focused on meetings that the city initiates to get feedback or, you know, share information about city-sponsored work.
The issues that I see that happen, that arise whenever there's not a council presence and, you know, someone from the mayor's office at, like, say, a community meeting, is that largely a lot of stuff that comes up is administrative issues, you know, whether it's like street cleaning or something like, so maybe, you know, those conversations end up becoming difficult if there's like a couple times where that individual doesn't come, you know, from the mayor's office. So I'm happy to set up something that's more productive, like leaving the meeting, that we can, and I'll do that with Rebecca, but I'm just noticing, you can't make all the meetings then, you know, like, you know, I always say the thing, like, I'm not the one that's going out and firing a grass cutter, you know, like, that's not our role. We could probably cut them out of the budget, that'd be weird, you know, we could like slash one grass cutter, replace that grass cutter with someone else, it's not our role. And so when people start complaining about typical, you know, issues at neighborhood meetings, it's just always helpful to be able to turn and work with you all to get that done. So I know it's challenging to get to all the 90 neighborhoods, and I'm quite aware, because the North Side has split themselves up in 16, 17 different ways. And they love that about themselves.
Well, I would say fortunately, attending the community meetings is not the only way that we're able to reach and engage our residents. It's a very critical and important one. The mayor embodies the principle of showing up, and not just meaning being here in person at work, but getting from behind our desks and being out in the community is really important, and having that increased in presence that our administration has had over the last almost two years now. So when those issues arise, we also encourage people to utilize 3-1-1, which is why we have now integrated that in with the Neighborhood Services team, so that it is coordinated in seamless alignment, working together. They also field tons of emails every day from folks, phone calls every day from folks, working through a tracking system to make sure that they are responding and getting back to folks about those issues, helping the departments close out 3-1-1 tickets, so on and so forth.
I don't disagree. I mean, I see the work you're doing, I appreciate the work. What I'm just talking about is just, you know, people love the in-person presence, and it shows that we're working together, that, you know, we can say, oh, we're going to work on that answer together, then, you know, me or my staff continually being in front of the community, being like, you know, we'll get back to, and, you know, like, they kind of, you know, they get the sense that we're, that we're on your side, you know, and that somehow we're going to be so adversarial, sometimes I'm like, well, it doesn't help me to be so adversarial about something, it's better that we stand up together and say, we're working on this together.
Sure.
You know, so that's all I'm saying.
Absolutely.
I'm not trying to harp on it, but I just think, I mean, we were here last year, and we were talking about how we were expanding it. And so I was looking forward to just kind of lessening, because there's like 10 emails that come from an interaction at a community meeting sometime.
I think you'll be really excited, Councilman, about a video coming out pretty soon about the improvements related to Neighborhood Services and our engagement that we're doing. Some of the data and numbers there are pretty impressive, so we look forward to continued collaboration with your office.
What's to come, a video on?
Neighborhood, some of the improvements that we've made around 3-1-1 integration in Neighborhood Services. I think you'll be pretty pleased to see some of that data that's coming out of that, either, I think actually either today or tomorrow should be released, so.
And would that, that goes into my second part I was going to ask about, would that be from your communications?
Absolutely.
Staff? Can you elaborate on, well, could you tell us the structure of the communications, the communications team, and then what's been enhanced? Because we saw at the mayor's budget address that went from one to seven or eight, I can't remember, and then he was talking about just, you know, all the enhancements there. So can you elaborate on, I mean, you're already alluding to something, so can you elaborate on what that, what that means?
For sure. So we have, just to walk you through the structure of our communications team, we have a communications director, we have a city correspondent, we have a digital communications specialist, we have a press secretary, and then we have three press officers. So very similar to many of the structures in our city, whether that is in OMB, in IMP, where you would have individuals who have a portfolio of departments that they are responsible for, supporting the communications work in. That is what, how our press officers operate with that support for those departments, along with our press secretary, as I said, our communications director, and the rest of the team. One of the things that's really important about 21st century communications is the different methods and strategies that we use to connect with and reach people. We know that if we want to reach a broad audience about all of the fantastic work that we are doing together as a city, we need to use different strategies and tools. So we need social media, we also need written content, we need video content. We know that all of that is what comes together to really help us be able to engage and spread that message to different audiences. Our youth, for example, their attention, we have the data that tells us the attention span, you have to catch them pretty quickly with a video, they're not going to read a long message, right? So how do we make sure we're reaching them? Well, we need to use those tools and strategies there. How do we ensure that we're reaching communities where we need to have, you know, a longer-form message, right? How are we working with all of our partners to do that?
So, do you view some of these communication positions, or you station some of these communication positions as though they are, it's ran out of the mayor's office, but they represent public safety, is that what I'm hearing, like?
That's one example where...
They don't.
They don't, because the nature of public safety communication is such that there are public information officers in public safety that do that.
So what are the departments that you feel like you're standing on?
All the others. So it is all the other departments, with the exception of public safety.
Correct.
Where, again, as Felicity mentioned, in the same way that we have budget analysts in OMB, who will have three or four departments that they handle the day-to-day transactions for, or, you know, IMP has business relationship managers that manage a couple of departments for all their technology needs. We have press officers with a portfolio of departments that they provide communication support for.
What about for zoning, city planning? Do you have someone there?
The current press officer position for PLI in city planning is vacant right now. We're in the process of hiring, actually interviews for those positions, but that work right now is being routed through a different team member, so that we ensure that we are still giving that capacity and support. For example, our communications director is participating in conversations around our comp plan work, right, to ensure that there is communications connections there.
And so how many, how many are those for departments?
I'm sorry, how many what are for departments?
How many communication positions are there for departments? How many are we talking about here?
So we have three press officers who have a portfolio of departments, along with our press secretary. But they are also supported by the Digital Communications Specialist, the city correspondent, and our communications director. But in terms of, you know, a portfolio division of departments, that is our press officers and our press secretary.
All of these positions provide support for all the work that the executive branch does, right? It's not, they're, some are specifically assigned to departments, as Felicity mentioned, but really all of the, all of this work is...
Work together.
So what does their, what does their day look like? Say, for instance, if, is it a media request, is it a council request, is it a department wants to get something out to, you know, the public, and that's going to be by way of email or social media?
It's myriad and various. There is never a standard day for them. So they are fielding media inquiries, we are doing proactive communications, so developing press releases and communication strategies, setting up press conferences, working with city council, working with those departments, social media content, working with the departments as well, as the rest of our mayor's office team. So it is all of the above that can happen in any single day, that they are fielding that sort of inquiries and work from departments, media, city council, so on and so forth.
Okay. And that was the four, and then what are the other three?
No, that's the entire communications team together.
Oh, that's, that's the description of them. I was talking about the four, you said the three...
The press secretary and the three press officers?
Yeah.
So the press secretary is the spokesperson on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh. And so she receives a lot of the inquiries around media. Sometimes media don't reach out to her directly, they may reach out to a department. Those departments then forward those media inquiries to our press secretary or to their press officers. That work is then delegated amongst them, depending on the subject matter of the inquiry, which department is sending that information over, and then they work on responses to those media inquiries. Our press officers also work with the departments to pull in proactive communication stories, and then share that with our communications director, our city correspondent, our digital engagement specialist, to produce whatever is the related communications deliverables. It may be a press release, it may be a press conference, it may be social media content, it may be a video, maybe an after-action. There are many different communications tools that we tap to be able to share that information.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Colquhull?
Thank you, Madam President. And again, sorry, I missed the introductions, but, I'm sorry, what is your name again?
Felicity Williams, Deputy Chief of Staff.
Felicity, okay, yeah, I know your name, I guess, you know, I think we have met a couple of times, but, okay, well, thank you for being here. You know, for the most part, you know, I have confidence that you know what you need in the staffing of the mayor's office, I do, and I take that for granted, just as Madam President, you know, knows what council needs. So, so I don't have a whole lot of questions for you, just a few.
Sure.
Again, back to the press, three press secretaries, is that what we call them?
We have a press secretary who manages the three press officers.
Who's our press secretary?
Olga George.
Olga, okay, and she was just recently hired.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, and we went from one to three, one last year, or previous years, to three.
We had one...
So we added two.
We had one, last year we only had one press secretary position, she was then promoted to communications director, and we backfilled the press secretary position. We also had a communications manager. So we had a team of two last year, and as you can see, that has now grown to the team I just described to you.
Right. And I think I caught this, I was trying to think of some things I wanted to ask, but I heard Councilman Wilson asked this, I think you covered this, but just to, just to reassure what I heard, the press team doesn't just necessarily deal with the media outlets, they deal with communication throughout the city of Pittsburgh.
Correct. Communications broadly, communications deliverables.
Right.
They are responsible for those.
It's not like they're just answering to calls that are coming in from media outlets, they take a proactive approach in, in many other areas.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, 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 good. Just real quick, I want to go through some of these. Executive office, that is the deputy mayor, that is, how many people in the executive office? I'm sure it's all here in print, but I'm hoping you know that off the top of your head.
That's not actually me, because, you know, I'm in the Office of Management and Budgets, budget. That office includes the mayor's chief of staff, it includes Felicity, and then the, excuse me, mayor's scheduler, special assistant to the mayor, Pam Collier, folks who are essentially the, it's the equivalent of your office staff, who do provide those close support activities, that's who's there, I think it's five people?
Okay.
So I brought it with me just to make sure I was walking through here. So it's actually, the executive office is actually about 15 people, including the mayor. So you have the mayor, the chief of staff, the deputy chief of staff, special assistant to the mayor, our administrative and project coordinator, executive assistant to the mayor, executive assistant to the chief of staff, and deputy chief of staff, our senior community advisor, our executive advisor on legal policy, inclusion, diversity, equity, and access manager, or a ADA, I'm sorry, ADA and disability resources coordinator, a compliance coordinator, and then an education coordinator who is currently funded through a grant position, and is not through city dollars. So I apologize, it's actually 13, I counted wrong.
Okay.
Including the mayor's office.
And that's fine, Felicity, I don't need a description of all of them, I appreciate that, though, but I was just curious as to number there. Office of Equal Protection. Now, how many folks are there?
Three.
Three, okay. Do they not overlap? Is this not something HR can do for us? What does the Office of Equal Protection do?
So it is not an overlapping function with HR. So, and I mentioned, yes, technically in code, we've created that office, but those team members are listed in terms of budget under the executive office. And so they handle things from disruptive properties, ADA and disability compliance, paid sick leave compliance, centralizing policies for the city of Pittsburgh, working on a project related to that. They will be supporting our workforce hub, doing some compliance there as well. It's really an administrative compliance arm. Largely, some of these things have been designated to the mayor's office by city council, the enforcement of, for example, Paid Sick Leave Act, and so these are the folks who are helping us to do that enforcement as well.
Where those functions, HR does have work related to the, you know, the employment rights of city employees, and so some, that might be what you're thinking, some of that work is located there. This is for folks who are not part of the city workforce, but rather city residents who are seeking these services.
Helping them enforce and support their rights as city residents.
And is Zeke Radicar, is he on that?
Yes.
He is, he leaves that, that team.
Okay, I like the job he's doing, I think he was a nice addition, I do. Office of Communications, we talked about that, that's the three press, that's the, and the press secretary.
And the communications director, and a few other team members, yes.
Okay. Office of Neighborhood Services?
Yes.
That is made up of how many?
Let me, I did not pull the exact count, let me count here.
What is their core function?
So they are centralizing all engagement on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh for city of Pittsburgh projects, connecting with our community organizations, constituent services... services. They are an interface in between the community and city government to help resolve any challenges that may occur. I'm sorry, they are a team of 18. Thank you. I hadn't counted the 3-1-1 folks yet into that. So it is made up of an outreach team, an engagement specialist, as well as the 3-1-1 team make up those 18 employees.
And how many on the 3-1-1?
Oh, I think that's probably the majority, that is the majority of the team. Give me one second here.
There are five 3-1-1 call center representatives and two managers, so a total of seven.
Yes.
Includes Wendy Urbana.
Correct.
Yes, and Naomi Johnson.
Office of Business and Diversity?
Yes.
That's, what is their core function?
So we have four positions there. Previously, the core function of the Office of Business Diversity has been compliance around M W B participation on city contracts. So going through our, staffing our Equal Opportunity Review Commission, but then also following up to ensure that there are prime contractors are submitting the documentation, that they are verifying that work. The vision that we have implemented, are in the process of hiring to fill a position right now, is that it's wonderful to have that compliance component that happens after the fact. But how can we be more proactive in creating a city in which everyone has an opportunity to thrive and has access and opportunity to participate on city contracts? And so that is a shift we are making to have them be more proactive and more engaged in the front end of a procurement process, rather than once the R F P has already gone out, someone has already been selected.
Immigrant and Refugee Affairs?
Yes. The Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs is a team of two. They are tasked with supporting the city's work in making it more accessible for our immigrant and refugee affairs community, helping to coordinate some of the service providers in that space, ensuring that we have language access. That is a huge portion of the work that they do. They've been supporting to ensure that, for example, working with partners, that we have work connections to workforce opportunities, not just through the city of Pittsburgh, but also in our current ecosystem, that they've been working on translating standard and template lease agreements into different languages. Housing has been a barrier for our immigrant and refugee community, and so they're working to remove and reduce those barriers for city of Pittsburgh residents.
So Felicity, do these folks work directly with, like, take for instance, my district, I have some wonderful organizations, Casa San Jose-
Yep, absolutely.
P H D C, Pittsburgh Hispanic Development Corporation.
They work with them very closely.
They work directly with them. They work directly with departments. It's not all
external. It's both internal and external.
Gotcha. And who are those three folks?
It's just, for Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs are two. So the manager of that office just recently transitioned, so that is a vacancy that we have posted in our hiring for. That was Faye Shola, a lobby. And then the other person in that office is Michelle King.
Okay. Workforce Development, Youth and Education.
Absolutely. So as you know, we were designated a workforce hub recently, one of five in the country by President Biden, due in large part to the leadership of the city of Pittsburgh. It's one of the reasons why they picked us. Also, because we have strong unions and amazing training programs here as well. The work that they do is in supporting and coordinating that ecosystem in terms of, like, learn and earn falls under the work that they do there as well. So not just how we implement it as a city ourselves, like the learn and earn youth that we bring in, but how we are working with Partner for Work, who receives city dollars to implement that program, to improve that program, to serve youth. Working on coordinating workforce tables in the city around how we create access and opportunities for folks to thrive in the city of Pittsburgh. Having an economic opportunity is one of the best ways to prevent violence and to really build peace for people in the city of Pittsburgh.
Right. And the final one is financial empowerment.
Yes. So our Office of Financial Empowerment has been funded by a grant through Cities for Financial Empowerment. They are a national organization, so it is not city tax dollars that support that.
So this does not cost us anything out of our operating-
It does not cost you anything, no.
I like those.
Now, I do want to make one note, that in the upcoming budget, that grant will expire for the one staff position that exists.
It's just one?
It's just one. It expires, not mid-year, but around, I think, October. And so there's a couple months of salary in this upcoming budget to cover that gap.
Okay. Well, it seems like you're pretty well-staffed. Is there anything that the mayor's office feels like they lack that would like to have more of? Any one particular or two particular areas?
I don't know that I have any one or two particular areas. I mean, the mayor's office, we can always use support as we are trying to improve engagement and how we are able to connect with expanded voices and residents of the city. We want to ensure that, you know, it's not just the loudest voices that get heard, but everybody in our city that we represent is heard as well.
You'll see, actually, it's a reduction of one, a net reduction of one staff position in this budget. It's on the summary sheet that Director McDivitt provided. That's essentially because of the transition within the 3-1-1 call centers, two fewer-
Part-time.
Full-time representatives and then three part-time employees. So it's one F T E less.
Okay, well, listen, thank you very much. You know, again, I try to, you know, just take for granted that you know what you need out of this mayor's office and the staffing that you need. And it seems like you're pretty well-staffed, and I don't think you exactly broke the bank and increased it $75,000 from last year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Try to be very smart about-
Yeah, Felicity, you need to be frugal in these days, of course, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's it for me, Madam President. Again, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill. Councilwoman Gross?
Hi again. I actually got here, so I'm glad you all are still here. I just want to go back for a minute to the questions that I was asking on Zoom.
Sure.
So, and since we were kind of going back to the whole idea of contracting, it's been an ongoing conversation that I think is an important one, that we've been doing now, and we've made progress. We've made progress at some of the authorities. We've made progress here internal at city council about how much of our dollars are we able to bring up to at least proportionally to W B E, N B E, all of the diversity things. And so, you know, 10 years ago, we weren't even asking those questions. And so reporting was a good beginning. And we really pushed forward, especially, I had some, I think, while I served on the P W S A, there were two or three attorneys, and they were especially good at helping us redo the contracting. I've talked about the pre-qualification, or I T Q, or whatever we call it here, where we put people, we figure out what their skill sets are, we issue R F Ps for, you know, not in multimillion-dollar chunks, for only large firms. And that that's been a great way to build up the capacity, especially in engineering, it's so kind of specialized. It was a real challenge there to say, well, these firms just don't have enough staff to even respond to the proposal, right? So they had to really build up their internal capacity. It was a really great way to do it. But it occurs to me now that we're kind of like, we should keep moving the envelope a little bit, or whatever that phrase is, that it's maybe not enough to just say, okay, now we're spending 20% of our contracts on minority and women-owned diverse firms, if they're all from, like, Kentucky and Ohio.
Yep.
Right? And so I would like not only to see the number and dollars of contracts, but I really would like to see how much of them are going to kind of resident and non-resident. So I'm kind of like starting to draw a little chart, right? So we've got operating and capital budget, but we also want to know how many of the firms are actually city of Pittsburgh firms? And then of those, how does that break down by diversity? But also, the columns, I really would like to see not just the number of contracts, but the dollars of contracts. So we've got a little, like, trivariet cross-tab going here. So I would love to see that.
Her little drawing. She's hanging out too much with Anthony Coghill.
I don't know. I think I just said a whole bunch of statistics words that I did not learn from Anthony. I definitely learned them in, like, the 1990s in graduate school.
She's my statistician.
So, yeah, I learned about cross-tabs in, like, 1990, so that was definitely way before anyone Anthony Coghill. So that way, we can actually see that we've spent dollars to city residents, which is the goal that we've been talking about, but we weren't really asking for the data arranged that way. And so I think it's time, as we've gotten better at our data gathering, and I really appreciate the time and attention that the mayor's office is putting to it and the work that you're doing with this, hopefully consultant, but let's make sure that we get the data in ways that answer our questions.
So Councilwoman, we absolutely can get you that data based on also who is local. That is something that the mayor has prioritized, and that is something that Chuck Dorum, our business diversity manager, looks at, not only when we're looking for compliance with M W B participation in general, as you said, but how many of those are locals. That is something that he is definitely pushing for.
But then break down the local, and so we can compare local to non-local by how many are the women, because I suspect that we're going to see the smaller firms being the local firms, and it will be more diverse representation, in part because of the efforts that the administration has done. I've noticed the trainings. I've noticed the kind of contract community meetings that you're doing, and I really appreciate that. And, because part of the problem, when you've got these big firms, especially the big out-of-town firms, you can't verify that they really are using the diversity subcontractors that say they're doing. They may say they have a women's firm that's doing part of the multimillion-dollar contract, but good luck trying to track that down and prove it.
So that's part of what the Office of Business Diversity and the measure, they have to actually submit their proof of payment to these firms. And then part of why it's important that we added the position of a contract compliance analyst, not this year, that was a position that was added last year, is because they are calling who they say they're paying directly to ensure that that is actually someone who is getting paid.
Right.
So to your point, making sure that what is being reported is what is actually occurring. They do a lot of that work. They do that work themselves.
Great. And so I'll just wrap up by saying, like, I think we're all going to be shocked at how much money we're spending not to, you know, city residents. When they're our employees, we require city residency. And we're spending our money on the, building up the human, you know, the human capital, the resources, the economic resources of our residents. But when we're subcontracting to large, out-of-city firms, sometimes we, there's no other way around that. But if there is another way around that, we should be looking for it. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it now.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. And maybe we should have a negotiation team with Councilman Coghill on there, because he's pretty good at getting new prices for everything.
That's what I wanted to look at.
So I just want to really, just quickly mention something about the city cuts program. I hear Councilman Wilson mentioned that it's not really our responsibility, and he's right, but there's a lot of things that aren't our responsibility that council takes on, whether it's, did you say, what'd you say?
What was that?
Not our responsibility to oversee it.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interject, but-
But go ahead, I'm letting you, go ahead.
What was what I was talking about?
What did you say?
I was talking about, like, our D B W workers. I'm not dissing them. I'm just saying, like, when I'm at a community meeting, people often, you know, get the idea that I'm the supervisor at the-
Okay, got it.
At the D B W center. I'm just saying, like-
Okay, got it now, okay.
Yeah, not city cuts.
I was going to really slam you, but okay, so I'm glad you stopped me.
Like, I don't have a tow truck. I'm not the supervisor. I have to work with a lot of several people to get something done.
But I think that that also, I do want to say that that, because this is a unique situation with you as, you know, overseeing some of the different things in the mayor's office, and also a director of O M B, it would be helpful to have, like, a work chart for the city for all of us to have. Do we have that?
It's in the budget.
Yeah, I would say, just to clarify, so Deputy Mayor Pollock and Director of O M B is separate from, he does not have oversight over the things in the mayor's office. That is led by Chief of Staff Wheatley and myself, that team, along with the mayor.
That's correct. There's nothing, nothing, none of the positions reflected in the budget for the mayor's office that we're discussing today report to me.
So Chief of Staff Wheatley oversees the directors?
No.
No, no, no.
I oversee the directors. But the team here in the-
In this budget proposal.
-in this budget section are all staff of, the 44 people listed here who work in the mayor's office, none of them report to me.
They report to Chief of Staff Wheatley ultimately, largely through me.
Okay. And, I mean, just for clarity, I did want to say that I think it's confusing because in the budget, or in the, I think it's the Home Rule Charter, where it has the deputy mayor as acting when the mayor's, you know, not unable to. So I think when we use it, like, more often, it's confusing. And it's confusing to me, to be honest, because I'm not sure whether I should call you butt stop, you butt stop. There's a lot of people, and there's also a lot of talent. So I want to make sure that I, it's just different than what I had been used to, you know, working with. So that's why it helps sometimes to know who I should call for what. But I'll be honest, you usually get the phone call.
Madam President, anytime you want us to walk you through that org chart and how that workflow and stuff, happy to do so.
Yeah. I think it would be great. I think it'd be good for our staff, so maybe we could do something like that.
For sure. Happy to do so.
For all of them with that. And with communications, I do want to say, I do think that there's a lot going on in that department. There's a lot more than we've ever had before. And in some ways, I think it's great. And in other ways, I think it's really been more difficult, to be honest with you, because when people had meetings in our communities, they used to work with us, they used to talk with us, not before, not after they scheduled the meeting, not after they did their hour, before. We were part of being a team with the administration and working together. And I think that that's helpful to us. And I think sometimes what you choose to do is to go around council and go right to the people in the community. And that, it causes tension with us sometimes. And I don't think it's needless, because we want to be partners. We want to work together. We want to do those things. So I think having that communication with the members, when you're doing something in our districts prior to doing it, you know, if the mayor's going to be there, they usually tell the council, hey, we want to be there this time. Are you able to make it? But sometimes they'll just say, hey, this is the day the mayor's going to be there. Can you join us? You know, that kind of stuff. Or we want to do this event, how would you think, like, would be the best way to go about some of that stuff? Because I think sometimes you're going to get different opinions. And I know you want to get different people to the table, but what I see is you are getting different people, but you're not getting the people that speak for the community. And you're not getting people that, and you're getting the same kind of people. You're doing the same thing, just differently. You know what I mean? You have a different group of people that you have at every meeting, but not, you know, a wide variety of people. And so I think we can help you do that and get there, if that's what the mayor's real goal is. I think we can help you with that. I just want to say that. Is there any objection to that?
I was, Councilwoman, Madam President, you know, we really do strive to collaborate with city council. I know that Rebecca Von Nala from the city of Pittsburgh services team is regularly engaging with many of you all around projects in your districts. So the work that you're talking about there-
So let me just say, I almost have almost no communication with her. I think maybe I've talked to her maybe two, three times. So go ahead. I want to say that. I want to be clear.
And so we are striving to do that. That's certainly some feedback that I can take back to her to ensure that we improve the ways in which we do that. But again, also for, you know, when activities are happening, one of the things that we have been striving to do is make sure that we are communicating to say, hey, we're going to be in your council district, or we got invited to this thing in the council district, even if it's not our-led activity, we want to make sure you know the mayor's going to be there, and if you want to be there, to be there as well. And we can definitely take that feedback and look to improve in how we do that.
Thank you. I think sometimes, like, they'll send an email, hey, we're going to be here for, like, the budget hearing. I'll be honest, I almost never share the budget stuff, because I feel like once council gets it, it's ours. And so I don't want to make people feel like, you know, that's final, whatever they said at that meeting. I want them to know that there's still a long process to go. So for that, but everything else, I try to share and try to put out there. But I would like to work with you on that stuff and a little bit more on that. When I retire, I'm going to come volunteer there, okay?
Madam President, if I may, just briefly, because we addressed it earlier, page 298 of the operating budget includes the org chart that you were asking about. I had to look up the page number.
Okay, good.
That having been said, of course, happy to have further, more detailed discussion about it with council staff or offices at your, at your leisure, but that's a good place to start.
Well, one of the things we used to have, it was a book with all the contacts for this whole city in. And our print shop used to, and they quit doing it, I think, right before COVID. I think it was right before, it wasn't because of COVID, it was right before COVID. But it was so helpful to have that employee directory, so then we knew, like, if this is what some, you know, because-
Yeah, I didn't, before our time, so I wasn't aware of that.
They stopped doing it before you got here.
No, I'm saying, I wasn't aware that it had existed for that reason. We can look into that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then- Sorry, people are sending me text messages to ask questions, but I'm not going to ask them all, but I will say, yes.
Oh, whenever I get a chance.
You both want, you both have a question? Okay. I just, could you tell us who the other people are that work in communications? We know it's Olga, it's the press secretary, and that Maria is the director of communications. Could you tell us the other, are there other
Uh, yes. So Audrey Wells is our digital communication specialist. Sidney Cooper is our city correspondent. Sue Lucas is one of our press officers. And then we have two vacant press, we love her team. We love all of our team. And then we have two vacant press officers, positions that have been posted and we've been interviewing for to fill.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Let me just ask them for other people. Thank you. Councilman Coghill, did you have something?
You know, I just wanted to add on, when Madam President was talking about the communications team. And I agree with her. I do. I've had a lack of communication with the communications team, I feel like. More recently, I will tell you, in Carrick, we were looking at opening up a possible shelter. we were looking at opening up a possible shelter.
Mm-hmm.
Had no idea that the director, Chief Frank and um, what's her name from the county, Erin Dalton, were even going to be there. And I'm a bit of a micromanager, you know, especially when it comes to the neighborhoods I represent. I'm not speaking for council member, I'm speaking for me. Um, I'm very, I I need to know who's going to say what, who's going to be there, what are we talking about? And I need to kind of educate them on who we're talking to. This particular instance was a disaster because of that. It really was. And I I ended up showing up there, but not in coordination with with the team. There was a couple other occasions too, where I just felt like there was just not the communication I'm looking for in my neighborhood. Anytime, I'm just asking you now, anytime the mayor's office sends representatives to my neighborhood to talk about any subject, I need to be fully informed. And I need to know who's talking and what they're talking about. So that's just a request from me moving forward, okay? I thank you for bringing it up, but really kind of um, yeah. And Rebecca's great. Well, I've worked with her on a couple of things, but I felt like I had to force my hand at one point and say, we need to meet in my office. I want to know who you're bringing, what you're talking about, and what we're going to be saying, and you know, who's going to be there. So I ask that of you. Now that you have a full staff there, as far as a communications team goes, shouldn't be a problem. I would just ask anytime you do any presentation, anything in my neighborhood, you go through my office.
And Councilman, I don't disagree with you. I just wanted to clarify for everybody here. So um the requests that you're making and those communications that you're asking for are not within the role of our our communications team. Those communications should be coming from who are the project leads on those types of pieces. So yes, received, we can improve and work on that together. I just want you all to know as you're looking for, who should I receive this information from? It would come from Neighborhood Services or whoever is like the project lead on that, not our our communications team or um a member of our OMB team. So that's who I want to make sure we improve those relationships with.
And the specific meeting that you're referring to, if I'm remembering correctly, I believe was organized by uh the county. So that wasn't.
Well, organized by the county or not, if we're sending a representative from the mayor's office.
Yes.
I need to be fully knowledgeable of what's going on there. I really do. I was caught off guard. The people who were in attendance were caught off guard. And um, it was really.
Heard and understood. I just, yeah.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yep, thank you.
Councilman Wilson, did you follow? Okay, I wasn't sure.
No, I just was listening to some of the uh back and forth. I'm sorry, some of the engagement that were happening earlier here um around, you know, what we're seeing on the sheet versus OMB you were alluding to. Um, and then which departments you oversee? And did you mention uh which ones Wheatley oversees? Can you go over that again?
Yeah, that's what I do.
All, all city departments.
Yeah.
Um, report through one of the OMB uh chief officers, either the chief administrative, sorry, chief operating and administrative officer, chief economic development officer, or the chief financial officer to me and then to the mayor. Um, the Chief of Staff Wheatley oversees the team within the mayor's office that we're discussing here today, which includes Felicity and the rest of the fifth floor staff. But there are, there are no city departments that report directly to Chief of Staff Wheatley.
Okay. So I heard that a couple of times within a couple of questions. So I was just wondering now, you know, how do you see yourself in this discussion at this table?
I came to the table to address, when we had this hearing last year, um, some of the questions were about the budget for the mayor's office specifically, and some of them were about the budget generally. So I came in the event that there might be broader questions or questions, as have come up a few times, where um the discussion around something that's specifically in the budget for the mayor's office uh triggered a question or triggered a response that also had to do with HR or one of the city departments.
Or department.
Yeah, so I'm just here to support that conversation.
I thought maybe you'd, you'd allude to the fact that your, you know, your title is Deputy Mayor and that you would um, I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is like, do you then oversee, do you step in and oversee everyone here when you're Deputy Mayor?
I, I suppose when the mayor is um uh out of town or otherwise unavailable, then yes, but um technically speaking, but I don't ever um, I don't, I don't ever oversee any of the positions.
Okay, so you don't see yourself as this is your staff when the mayor's out of town?
No. Well, I, no, not really. No. I mean, in, in instances where that's necessary, right? If I'm um, you know, speaking on behalf of the mayor, then the communications team provides support for that. But but I don't direct their work.
Correct. Yeah, he doesn't direct the work of this team. Um, but if the mayor is out, work, Chief of Staff Wheatley for the leading this team, working collaboratively. If Chief of Staff Wheatley is out, working collaboratively together, we are one city, one team. Um, so that is how we operate collaboratively. But in terms of uh supervision and directing work, there is, you know, a clear distinction there.
Okay, thanks. I want to get that. Um, just want to get that understanding. Thanks.
For sure.
Okay. And um, so I just think it would be helpful to see some of this in writing and and, you know, even just to have like this outlined a little bit. Um, and I, so thank you for telling me the page that's on. Um, I think that's it really for me. I just really think that uh, did you ever think about maybe even changing? Some of the things um we've heard was maybe change the title to maybe we can add a chief operations officer, one chief operation officer. Was that what it was? We had some conversations about it and I can't remember. But maybe, so I just wanted, maybe we'll, we'll expand on that when you and I meet and talk. But I do want to thank you because you are always available. And so I know that it is maybe confusion over the title, but I know it's clear who I call when I need something. So thank you very much for, for always answering the phone and always getting back to us so quick. I mean, you really are really quick about that. Felicity, I'm looking forward to working with you some more.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Deputy Chief of Staff, I'm sorry.
It's all good.
I'm sorry. I'm getting old. Anyway, okay. But thank you all for you, for everything you do. And if uh there's other meetings you want to be a part of, just let us know, okay?
Absolutely.
So we're going to uh now recess this for one minute, and then we're going to start with the Controller's Office.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate the questions and the feedback. I've got it.
Meeting's recessed. Sleep this morning or afternoon. Good morning. And welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's budget hearings, resumed budget hearings. I'm Teresa Cal Smith, and I chair the Committee on Hearings and Policies. And the department, we will hear updates from this morning are from the Office of City Controller. I first turn it over to our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, to give us a brief overview of the department. And then I'll mature over to Councilman Kalko for a minute and back to the Controller.
Thank you, Madam President. The City Controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens in the city of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the Controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. The Controller does this by auditing all city government-related expenditures. The city also has a finance department and treasurer who collect and audit all city revenues. The Controller also conducts audits of all city departments and city authorities, such as the Urban Redevelopment Authority, Pittsburgh Parking Authority, Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, and the Pittsburgh Housing Authority. Through audits of the city departments and authorities, the Controller makes recommendations on how to make those departments more effective, efficient, and how to better spend city tax dollars. Quick overview of the Office of the Controller includes the following core services: accounting, accounts payable, performance audit, fiscal audit, and engineering. Um, a quick update of the position summary, there will be, there's proposed fifty-eight total full-time positions in the twenty twenty-four budget, which is a reduction of two positions. There is an addition of assistant controller for administration, a reduction of one city clerk, two, an addition of personal and finance analysts, a reduction of one legislative projects analyst, an addition of special projects manager, a reduction of an administrative assistant, one reduction of an assistant payroll audit supervisor, a reduction of one performance audit manager, and the addition of one senior system analyst, three, the reduction of a system analyst, two, the reduction of a assistant fiscal audit manager, and the addition of one assistant special projects manager. Overall, that is actually a decrease of about thirty-six thousand dollars or one percent, and all positions are non-union. And there are no other changes to the non-personnel budget, and there's nothing in the capital budget.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Kalko, I know you have to leave, but you wanted to say.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I have a um twelve o'clock outside of the office, but I just wanted to take the opportunity um to say, Mr. Lambhair, I've known him most of my life. We grew up in the same neighborhood. And I just want to say, you've been a great fiscal watchdog for the city of Pittsburgh. And I don't think there's any other department or office that runs better and more smoothly than your office. So I want to thank you for your years and years of service. Um, you know, we know you will be departing in January. And on that said, I'm so confident in Rachel Heisler. I think she's going to just pick up right where you left off. So, and I know she has your confidence as well, otherwise you wouldn't have hired her uh two or three years ago at least. So, so, so I just wanted to say that. I really have no questions for your office. I think it runs like, uh, you know, a well-oiled machine. And, you know, I know most of the employees I I know, and I couldn't have better experiences with the Controller's Office throughout the years.
Thank you, Controller. And I'm just going to say, I'll have total confidence in the future Controller when she moves to District Two, like the current Controller.
She's coming south.
Yes, but no, she lives in the North Hills now, right? North Side, doesn't she? North Side, which I also now represent a part of. I said North.
Too expensive over there. Too expensive.
I was wishful thinking.
I, I really appreciate that. Um, you know, it's been, it's been a wonderful um run. And uh, we're going to finish, finish the next six weeks strong and um be available to council for uh any discussion, financial or otherwise. Um, so I, I am very proud to be joined today by, what do you hear this title? The Controller-elect of the city of Pittsburgh, Rachel Heisler, after her historic victory last week, the first uh woman to ever take the position of city controller. And so it's uh, so I'm glad she's here and she's going to talk a little bit about next year's budget. I did want to talk a little bit about this past year and the things that we've done this past year. And uh, we were, we were in the um, we, we did, we did recycling this year. We audited the recycling program. We did EMS again, looking at response times and the other issues around EMS. We were at Public Works looking at the Shetree Trust Fund. We were, uh, we did, of course, the the tax abatement and tax increment financing reports that we do every year. We were at the EEOC. We looked at their trust fund. We looked at the um, at OMB, the South Side Parking Enhancement District. We were, we did that this year. And then we did a special report on um City of Pittsburgh Parks uh Trust Fund, which was just recently released. You know, this office is changing a little bit this year, and it's, it's noted in the budget. And I just wanted to explain a little bit about that change in the budget. Um, the, the, the role that the Controller played with respect to what I always considered non-controller functions, like um enforcement of the prevailing wage, the service employee prevailing wage, and, and the uh, the sick day policy and some of the environmental kind of things, working with, with Councilman Wilson. Uh, we, we were able to, and the mayor's office, the mayor's office, as you know, with our support and help, created the Office of Equal Protection this year. And so a lot of that function will transfer to them. Uh, so it'll enable us to do a little bit of reworking of the staff in our office. So we, you know, so it's uh, it, I think makes for a better situation. I always say, the Controller's job is to audit the function, not to perform the functions, you know? And so, so it's a, it's a much better fit. Uh, and Mr. Reddicker over in the mayor's office is heading up that effort over there now. And uh, I think a real improvement for us moving forward. Um, you know, over the year, over this past year, we, we continued the work that we did. You know, all through the pandemic, we continued to produce the checks every week, you know, and get the bills paid and do the work, do the accounting, and to do it timely. You know, we are now entering a point where um, you know, it's, it's financially, we're starting to question things uh as far as the future and, and, and our, our future budgets. Um, and to be able to have timely financial data available is what we do. And and we take pride in it. And again, this year, we're able to produce the annual report on time. We were able to produce the popular annual report on time and all of the financial reports that we do.
I'm trying to get your picture because this is the last time you'll be at the table.
That's the first thing you know, she was taking like Tom.
I want to frame it for you. I'm sorry.
I was trying to pretend I didn't see that. But um, uh, and so all of, all of the accounting functions that we do, um, the accounts payable, um, we, we, we executed over five hundred contracts this year. And uh, you know, we, when you look at the spending that goes through our office, it's, it's approaching a billion dollars a year of checks that go out the door uh for us. And uh, so it's a, it's a big, um, it's a big responsibility and it requires uh a lot of attention. And that's why um, you know, we are still very close to the employee level that we were in Act forty-seven. And over the next few years, I know the next Controller is going to be talking to you about that and about the need for more auditors, the need for more inspectors, the need, you know? And so while, while the, this, this budget may not really push that line, that's going to be the future. They, we need, we need more help to do the important function that, that we perform. Um, we um, you know, again, continued to do the, that, that work, and, and I'm sure it will continue under the new Controller. Um, I, I don't, I'm going to let Rachel talk a little bit about twenty twenty-four budget because she will be the one overseeing it. But I just want to talk about a couple of things. And I was moved, I was, I was interested in a statement that I read uh in the, in media recently by our council president uh about the budget and, and about focusing on basic municipal services. Um, you know, this city has two main functions, to keep people safe and to keep neighborhoods clean. And as we get into these discussions around budget, um, looking out over the next five years, we have problems. And we have real financial problems without new revenue. And, and so you're going to get to that point, we got to start questioning some of the spending. And when you're doing spending that don't fall into one of those categories, either keeping neighborhoods clean or keeping people safe, that's, that's an expenditure that really needs to be questioned and, and looked at. Uh, and so I, I encourage you to do that. Um, the other thing I will tell you that I find a little troublesome in this budget, and we talked a little bit about this when we were talking about this new bond deal that the city wants to do, um, debt service is creeping up again. Uh, we have a policy here that debt service has to stay below twelve percent of budgeted uh expenditures. Um, we are, with this budget, we have eclipsed ten percent. So we're getting closer to that, to that threshold and, and to that line. And that does not include the two and a half million in addition to debt service that's, that's the latest deal anticipates. Because that, that two and a half, even though we are guaranteeing it, will not show up in our books on our budget, because it's going to show up on the URA's books. So I would just caution you as you move forward and you start talking about debt, this idea of, of putting debt on other entities' books as a way to stay under this twelve is not what was intended. You know, we, we, that twelve percent number is the number, and then we ought to try to stay within it. Um, that's just good, uh, I think prudent financial advice. And um, and so I would, I would caution you about that. Um, but like I said, I, I've, I've had the last sixteen years to do this job. Um, it has been, it's been a, a real pleasure uh working with council, uh who we've always had great relationships with. Uh, and I know I'm going to be here next week, so I won't, I won't go too far into what I want to say. But uh, I, I do want to thank you uh for um, just, we've always had a very cordial and professional interaction. And um, and it's certainly appreciated on my part. So thank you.
Thank you, Controller.
Before you turn over to Deputy, I can.
Yes, please go.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. We should, we didn't talk about twenty-four. So Rachel's going to just talk a little bit about.
That's what I want to do. I just want to ask some questions about what you're referencing here. Um, but first, yes, I think I'll be able to do it again. But thank you for your service. Since we got six weeks, I mean, you know, that six weeks, um, I'm sure there will, you know, there will be something special that we'll do uh here.
Monday, we're going to do a proclamation.
Okay, yeah, great.
And a little reception.
So in another week.
Yeah.
But thank you for your service to the city of Pittsburgh. I appreciate everything you've done. And to that effect, you were alluding to, you know, some of the um challenges that you see in, you know, the current budget. And just want to ask you, well, one is about the process, because, you know, you're expressing your concern, your opinion, but there is a point where you go and you sign the budget, right?
Well, I don't sign it, but yeah.
Or there's like some sort, like you sign off on something?
What I do is I, we certify the revenues, mainly the tax revenues, as to whether the assumptions in those revenues for the current year are reasonable, which we did. We believe, we believe that the, the anticipated revenue is, is reasonable.
Yeah. Okay, great. Because that's what I wanted to just kind of understand a little better. So that, that process that happens is that you're, you're certifying that the revenues that they're saying, you know, that are in the budget, that the mayor puts in the budget, um, is accurate.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we, we meet in August with the mayor's budget office, with council budget office and myself. And, 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 and the mayor's office, the finance department produces a, you know, what they believe are the anticipated revenues um from, primarily from taxes. And then we take a look at that to determine, okay, are their assumptions valid? Uh, uh, you know, and, and it's not exact. You know, and it's not exact. And we try to be conservative in our estimate. I think the city's done a pretty good job of being conservative in their, in their estimates. I, as I said in the letter that I sent to council, I have some questions about some specific line items there. But in totality, I, I think that they get to the number that they have suggested in the budget.
Right, so your signature, you view that as more of like, you know, more of a, an official way that it's, that those revenues are checked versus like, I believe, I believe in this, like this budget is, is gonna, is gonna make sense for Pittsburgh.
Just for a point of clarification, it's only the next year's revenue projections. The five-year revenue projections are not things that we certify. It's, it's the next year's.
Where, where is that, is that a code or is that something that?
So that's a certi, what's in the letter, we certified next year's revenues, but it's also in the code. This is a, this is sort of one of the holdover ordinances that was created out of Act 47. As part of the Act 47 process, after, after the, you know, when, when the budget was produced by the Mayor's Office to the ICA, then the ICA would ask the Controller's Office to verify whether next year's revenues, as suggested, are reasonable.
Do you see there's an opportunity?
Yeah. So, and so, and so that, we, you know, we thought that was a pretty good process. All three of us, my office, Council and the Mayor's Office, that, that has been a pretty good process, so let's keep doing it. So we codified that.
What about the five-year, do you think that there is an opportunity to?
I mean, certainly, you could, I will tell you that I, I have some real disagreements with the five-year plan, to be honest with you. I think when you look at, and Rachel and I have talked, on the revenue side, even though it's not a tax revenue, what's anticipated in interest income over the next five years, I think is unreasonable. I don't think it's reasonable at all.
But you said interest?
Interest income. So, interest that we get, well, it's basically the interest you earn on your money.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have money invested in several bank accounts and in certificates and in other vehicles. And, you know, I think we're at around $15 million in revenue on that. Well, that's because interest rates are up and because we're sitting on a lot of money right now.
ARPA?
ARPA money and, and, and general fund balance money. So that's generating a lot of interest to the city right now. But as time goes on, that money is gonna be spent under this five-year plan. If that money's not there, then you're not gonna earn interest on it. Secondly, so you're losing the principal of that money. Secondly, interest rates are probably at, maybe at their peak. And we don't know what's gonna happen, you never know what's gonna happen with interest rates. But as the, you know, as the economy or the, the economy improves, as inflation comes under control, the likelihood is that interest rates could go back down.
Do you, do you see an opportunity to, I'm not sure how you verify revenues that aren't, you know, in the five-year, I'm not sure how you would verify revenues out, five years out.
Well, there, there are ways. I mean, there, there certainly are, you know, during the entire time of, of Act 47, the city had a, had a professional contracted, that would, that would do revenue analysis.
So do you see an opportunity for, you know, us to be more fiscally responsible by including another process where there is a, there is that, that check on a five-year?
Yeah, but you understand, of course, that, you know, five years out, it is, it, you know, you're talking about estimates. And all you wanna make sure is that the estimates you're making are reasonable. Are you, you know, can you really reasonably expect this kind of revenue, you know, in that year? You know, I, I think, you know, we knew that in, in the, during the pandemic, we knew that getting $15 million a year out of amusement tax wasn't gonna be, that's not realistic, right? That wasn't gonna happen cuz there were no special events. So, you know, you just have to, and, and knowing something like that five years out is difficult. So you're basically, you're making that determination based on what you know today and what the likelihood is of those things transpiring into the future. So like I said, in one area of the current five-year plan, I think the assumption that we're gonna continue to get 15 or more million dollars a year in interest is not reasonable. I don't think it's, I don't think it's likely at all.
I just think it's an interesting conversation cuz, you know, I think the budget, two years out, three years out, you know, we see the, you know, the lower spending on paving, URA, different things where the, the budget is balanced, but things are decreased. And, you know, then things get better in the, in the five-year. But then also it does it because there's that, the debt, you know, the 10%, the, the fund balance is at 10%. So, but, but what I wanna say is that it would be interesting to set up a process where there is, I'm not sure what you would call it, some sort of verification that council could receive from, you know, the, the Controller's Office, so that we can make better decisions on the five-year projected. Do you think there's an opportunity to?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the, the best tool that I think we have are the monthly reports that just show you how much revenue coming in, how much expenditure's going out. And you could probably time that out to, just to see where you would be. There's a way to do that kind of analysis. We, we probably don't have that level of expertise in our office right now, but certainly it, that, that level of expertise is out there.
I mean, if you could, you know, gather that expertise somehow.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's an existing contract that we have.
We've had it in the past, I'm trying to remember the, his name. You remember him? Dr. Weir, Dr. Weir, Dr. Michael Weir. He was, he was, he worked, I think, at the Pennsylvania Economy League at the time. And he was doing revenue analysis for the, for the ICA.
Yeah, cuz what I'm describing, I think this is a daunting task that council has here. I think it, it's very much overlooked, the budget and how we, the role we can play in the budget to make sure that, that Pittsburgh is healthy in the future. I think a lot of, and we're talking with the Mayor's Office previously, is like, you know, people see us at the community meetings doing community constituent services. Whereas, you know, we're very, you know, I would say our, our staff is, we don't have a, a large staff, you know. I have three staff members, we largely do constituent stuff. And then different, you know, pieces, different bills, legislation to, just like you alluded to, to try and improve, you know, the, the one you were talking about is to, you know, is to make sure that workers are being paid the correct amount, you know, the prevailing wage act. And, you know, making sure that exists, the enforcement exists in the right place. We didn't get to that, I'm glad that, that, you know, that report was read and received the information and they took, took the reins and, and made that happen. And so, but, you know, we have a budget, Budget Director and everything, we're going, we're sitting through the hearings. But I still think that we, as City Council, could be more e- even engaged in, in how we're gonna make sure that Pittsburgh's gonna be, you know, withstand the test of time in terms of finances. You're doing a great job, Peter, I'm just saying, you're one person.
We just had a nice little sidebar, we're gonna have a, a meeting with all this together.
You're one person, but I do think that there is an opportunity, you know, as we see this, ARPA goes away, we see, I think there is an opportunity to, you know, have the conversation of how do we really project in the future with, with revenue, so that, you know, we're making accurate. You know, I don't wanna get to the year 2025, 2026 and go, it's even worse now. You know, and we didn't, we didn't, we had an opportunity to correct it two years ago and we didn't.
I would tell you that one of the, one of the things I talk about, I've, I've, probably I've talked about every time I've been in front of the media in the last five years, is that as the ARPA money, you know, as that money is no longer available to us, the one source of revenue that we have to get resolved is the nonprofit piece. You know, the large nonprofits have to contribute to the city's bottom line. That requires conversation and discussion. And, you know, the, the Mayor's Office, I know they're working on that. I, I know that there's a lot of discussion around the large nonprofits about what that should look like. But we gotta get that deal done. That deal's gotta be done and the sooner the better.
Yeah, I see a lot of participation from, you know, just this morning, walking through the substation with PNC, so that public-private partnership. And, you know, I think what you're alluding to is with the pilot, you know, there could be even more opportunity with our large nonprofits.
That's right.
So, you know, that's how, that's how we make things work around here. But I don't wanna labor that, I know we got a lot to talk about, the 2024 budget. My last thing I wanna ask about was you mentioned 12%. I thought it was 10%.
So did I, but I, it turns out that it's 12.
It's 12.
I was looking at the, I was looking at the ordinance this morning.
What are your, what are your, what are your thoughts?
I just wanna make sure, there's two different numbers. There's the fund balance reserve, that, that's 10% minimum. But how much debt, the debt ratio of our expenditures could be 12% at max?
So basically, right now, your budget's $680 million and, and our debts, our annual debt service payments is around 69 million. So that's more than 10%, but it's not quite 12. You know, so, but I'm just saying-
We're meeting the 10% with the, with the fund balance.
With fund balance, right.
We're meeting both numbers currently.
But in the future. We go down to 10 in the five-year projection, the five-year projection, five-year budget. And then we, we dip, we dip below 12, you're saying?
We go up to, I think it's 11.4% is-
Well, well, just in general, I appreciate that. But there are national standards out there that, you know, I believe I've discussed with your office before and about the fund balance and that 16% is, is where we wanna be.
Yeah, I think the GFOA would agree with that. I mean, you know, there, I think 10 is kinda the low end of where they think it ought to be, but-
Well, do you think there's an opportunity, or do you think there, there is a, you think there is, you think there should be a push to increase to 6% requirement in our code?
I think it's sound policy. I think that, you know, I think anyone tell you that that is, that's sound policy. But that always depends, you know, that always depends on performance, you know? It's all about how much surplus you can generate in a year and, and have into that account. And fortunately, we've generated some pretty healthy surpluses here over the last, really, the last number of years. So that's what's enabled us to build that fund balance to what it is. Again, a lot of these decisions would be really left to council and I still think it gets back to that basic issue that we should be funding. You know, we're a city, we're a city government and our job is to provide basic city services. And, and that's what we should be focused on. When, when we stray away from that, we're creating added expense that somewhere down the line is gonna create a problem.
Thank you, Councilman. And we also have Councilwoman Warwick online, but we're going to go to Deputy Director, or Deputy Controller-elect, actually, Controller-elect Rachel Heisler first, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President.
I'm trying to remember what title you have today at the table.
Thank you. I just, I wanna highlight something we started last year that I hope to continue moving forward. First, I wanna acknowledge our hardworking staff. Councilman Coghill alluded to the folks who are in our office. Anytime anyone needs anything, we are usually able to turn something around in 24 hours. We don't hold on to things, we move things, we move contracts, we move payments after we inspect and audit invoices. And I'm, you know, I'm honored to work alongside Controller Lamb and with the 52 other employees in our office. So I just wanna highlight the Special Reports Project, if you will, that we started last year. Last year, we did the Service Worker Prevailing Wage Report and the Pilot Payment Report. And this year, we did the Parks Tax Trust Fund. And a, a direct byproduct of our prevailing wage report was our, was, was the change in bringing Zeke into the Mayor's Office to run, you know, oversee that work, which was appropriate. And then I know we're doing a post-agenda in December on our Parks Tax Trust Fund Report. So those are in addition to the audits that are required by the Home Rule Charter. And some of the changes that are reflected with staff titles, et cetera, in the, in the budget for next year reflect the, the growth, if you will, of that section of our, of our office. It's not a core function, but it is a, I think it contributes greatly to our interest in impacting public policy in the City of Pittsburgh and changing the way things get done and improving what council and the mayor have access to. So I just wanna highlight that and reiterate that, you know, we're moving, we move checks. Anytime anybody ever needs anything, if there's a missing check or a settlement that's gotten lost in the mail, we can cancel that payment, reissue a check, usually within 24 hours. And our hardworking employees are very, very dedicated to their, their jobs. And as Controller Lamb alluded to, didn't miss, we didn't literally miss one check run for the entire, during the entire duration of the pandemic. So that will continue hopefully forever and, but I'm glad to be here. So thank you very much and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Warwick, did you have any questions?
Yes, hi, sorry, sorry about there today, I'm a sick kid at home. So, yeah, thank you, thank you for being here and for all your work. I guess one thing I'm, I'm kind of curious about just as we're talking, well, just with regards to the prior conversation about the budget. How much, if, if any, how much, well, I should say, is there involvement with the control? Like, or do you give input into the budget at all? Is that something that happens as part of the process?
Yeah, no, I really don't. I mean, our only involvement in the budget is the budget of our own office and then the certification of the revenues that we do. That's really our only connection to the budget process.
Okay. I don't know, maybe that's something, I'm always for sort of working together. Maybe that would be, you know, moving forward, you know, I, I think, I, I will say this. So in terms of, and, and this is my first time sort of going through this, this process, so I don't necessarily have a reference. But, you know, we had these internal briefings with the various departments and at least I felt like we were really able to, you know, between like version one and version two, a lot of good changes were made. You know, like a, a, a lot happened and I was, I, I personally was, you know, happy with, with what we came out with and that was, I think that was part of that, right? That was, that was having those briefings and, and, you know, working together ahead of time. So I don't know, it would be great if, if the Controller's Office, just for next year, you know, could be part of that, maybe part of those briefings or whatnot, just a thought. And I guess just, could you just clarify about the, you know, with regards to the bonds, the, the URA, you know, the Affordable Housing Bonds? Could you clarify again about, because I'm, I'm just getting a text that, that, let's see. Sorry, and I'm not like an expert in these things, but that, that the city is not a guarantor on that bond, that it's the URA, is that correct?
Well, it depends on, I mean, at the end of the day, the URA is a component and unit of the City of Pittsburgh. So their debt becomes our debt sooner or later, if, if there was a failure, you know. But, but, and while we may not technically be a guarantor on the deal, the fact is, it's the, it's City Council and the Mayor's Office who are dedicating city revenue to pay that debt. Right? So, so you're, you're talking about two and a half million dollars per year for-
Right.
And again, this, this still hasn't even happened yet, so we don't know the complete details. But I sat in on those meetings with council, with the bond, with their bond council, you know, a few months back. And what they suggested was around two and a half million dollars per year in debt service. Now, that debt service will not be reflected on the city's financial statements. It'll, they'll be on the URA's financial statements. But it's city revenue that's paying it. So, so while it will not be counted in your sort of 12% threshold, it's still, it's still debt that the city taxpayers are responsible for.
Okay.
And so I see that in a way as, and I know this isn't the intent here, but, but it is a way of trying to avoid, you know, trying to bring on more debt without bumping up against your ordinance around debt and, and, and debt management. So I, I, I'm just cautioning you now that as we move forward, you know, that's, that's gonna become a problem if, if they continue to do that by bringing on debt that the city taxpayers are responsible for, but the debt is actually issued by someone else.
Okay. And then also just with regards to what you were saying before about, so I mean, I do understand, I do understand what you're saying about the interest rate, you know, interest rates are high now. So, you know, kind of assuming that those are gonna stay high, hard, hard to say, right?
Let's, let's hope, let's hope this is, interest rates being high.
Right, right. But I mean, just in terms of the budget overall, I mean, you know, when we have money, it's, I mean, you know, we have a lot of money in the, so you, so you're just saying that your, your concern is with the estimate on the interest rate for the money that is sitting in the bank accounts now, that we won't have that much money necessarily sitting in the bank accounts earning interest next year, the year after?
That's right, that's right. So, you know, if you're, you're already saying that your fund balance is gonna be reduced, well, that's money that's earning that interest. And so if you don't have the principal earning that interest, you're gonna have less interest income. And then on top of that, if interest rates do reverse and go back down, then you're taking another hit at that, at that revenue. So I just don't think over the next five years, 15 million dollars a year, is a reasonable number to expect in interest income. I, you know, and I, you know, so, and because again, we're getting, we're, we're likely to get hit on both sides of what, what generates that, that revenue. We're gonna, we're likely to seize, and maybe not, but, but we're likely to, is we're gonna see some reduction in interest rates over the next five years. And, but the one thing that's guaranteed is we are gonna see a reduction in principal. So we know that, that that money's not gonna be there to be earning that interest.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, so I mean, again, all of this is to say, I think, I mean, you know, these are always like conversations- that are helpful to have ahead of time, right? So maybe, I mean, not to say that there's any, that that's any, but just going forward, maybe for next year, just in terms of the process, like bringing your office in. I guess I'll move on to the other thing that I wanted to, just in terms of collaboration, right? Between the, between the branches of government. I know that, that, you know, I always find it really valuable to be able to sit down with Rachel and like ask, ask questions and ask for help clarifying a lot of these financial things that, you know, that I am not necessarily an expert in by any means. So, and also with the various, the various audits and reports. So one thing that I would like to do, and I've talked with a few members about this going forward, and maybe, maybe even whether it's through legislation or just, just doing it as a matter of course, is to start having, because one thing I feel like is when, you know, your office does these great audits, whether it be an audit or a special report or whatever, and a lot of the time, you know, we have so much that comes in front of our desk. And a lot of the time, it feels like the public really just kind of like, whatever the media is able to, to pull from those reports is what, what everyone hears. And I think it would be nice, if only for all the work that goes into them, for you all to have the opportunity in the form of a post-agenda to, to really kind of present the, you know, give the synopsis of the report, both to council and to the public. If, does that sound like something, but I also, I mean, I know that that could be a bandwidth issue. You guys do a lot of work. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I would welcome that opportunity. I know we are going to do one in December on the Parks Tax. I'll pull an example. In the last, the EMS audit, the recycling division audit, and the fire department audit that we'll release hopefully in December, in all three of those, we talked about the fleet, which is not a sexy issue to cover in the, in the press, but it's something that's significantly important to those three core services of the city. And when you look at the capital budget and the changes that have been made to the capital budget, we in 2025 and 2026 will spend less than $3 million in, in each year on, on the fleet. A fire truck costs between a million and a million and a half dollars today. So, you know, connecting those two issues and making sure that council understands, you know, the legitimate ramifications of changing the capital budget, you know, and connecting them back with audits that we've released in one calendar year, all of which we'll talk about the fleet, I think is extraordinarily valuable to, to members of council and also the public. So I'm, I'm thrilled to, to do that moving forward and looking forward to it.
I would just add to that, that your, your point is well taken. You know, we, if you look at our audits, we write a lot of findings that actually praise the department for the work that they're doing. You know, a lot of, a lot of times, what we find in audits is that people are doing a really good job. Now, you'll never read about that in the media, but because it's not the kind of thing they want to cover. But you're right. So yeah, there's, there's a lot of information in there I think would be valuable for people to know.
Okay, great. And then just in terms of, you know, long-term, long-term staffing, you know, that, you know, for next year as you guys, as you guys grow, you know, those are conversations for, for next year's budget that, that I'm happy to have. I know it's, it's always important for people to have the, the staff to do, to do the work that they need to do. At any rate, I don't have, I don't have really any other questions, I don't think. I know, Rachel, you're going to give your, your overall presentation, but okay, I'll let that.
Thank you. And I'm going to actually turn over to Director McDevitt for one second to add some clarity for some comments.
Oh, yeah. So we were talking about the, the debt and the debt that the URA is taking off. So I think Controller Lamb is correct that that is debt that the city has taken the responsibility to pay off, but it is not debt that the city itself is taking out. It is, it is on the URA's books as debt, so that's why it doesn't show up in that debt ratio. But through legislation the council passed earlier, we have guaranteed $2.5 million a year to pay for that debt.
And it's my understanding too, it's a contractual agreement. And we are going, we, I don't, we haven't seen it yet. I don't think it's in our office. But we are signed, the city of Pittsburgh is signing a contract to make that $2.5 million payment annually for 30 years?
I can't remember. I mean, it passed through council, so it's in legislation.
Councilwoman Gross, thank you, Director.
Thank you all. I appreciate you being here. Yeah, we've touched on a lot of topics already. So I want to, and I know that we're going to do the Parks Tax Trust Fund in a separate post-agenda. And so I reserve the kind of substantive comments I have about that, for that post-agenda. Because I have some, both, I think, things that I'm, I agree with and some things I disagree with. And so I'll save those comments for, for that post-agenda. What I am happy about is seeing a, a Controller's Audit that talks about impact. And that's a real shift. So I thought maybe you would want to talk about that for a minute. Because I feel like it's a real shift in going from like the performance audits to really kind of like, what are outcomes? And there are lots of times that we really want to talk about that, right? We need to, we need that feedback loop to make sure that we are making good policy or where we need to adjust policy. But that comes with a little bit with a cautionary comment of like, you know, do you have the skill sets to do that well? Let's maybe I'd give you a chance to talk about that for a minute.
So, I mean, I think our office, you know, we are a, we are a number of things. And in addition to being the city's accountant, we are the city's auditor. And that is an auditor of its funds, but also an auditor of its performance. That's our job. That's our, that's our mission, right? And so when it comes to performance audit in particular, I think we do a really good job. I think we have the skill sets for that kind of work because we are, we're basically comparing what the city does towards some standard or towards some best practice. And that's, but any of those audits you see, that's what that is. It's we're, we're comparing what we're doing to what, what is a defined best practice or what is a national standard. So when we do EMS, we're comparing ourselves to a national standard on response time, you know? Or we're, and we're, when we're doing Public Works, we're comparing our paving program to some best practice that's been established for that. So I think we are very well equipped for that. There are those things that come up, Special Reports and others, where there is an, an added expertise that we need. There may be an engineering expertise that we don't have. There may be a legal expertise that we don't have, or even a sort of a forensic kind of accountant expertise that we don't have. But in those cases, we would, we could contract out for that, or we would just limit the scope and, and note that, that lack of investigation. So I think there are some investigative type expertise, expertise that we might not have. But I understand that what we are, we are not an investigator. We do not have subpoena power. So when we do an audit, we're relying on the readily available information and then the information that the departments are willing to share with us. Fortunately, we've had very good relationships with city departments and people are very forthcoming and almost always give us what we're looking for. But we don't have, you know, we don't have subpoena power. So we can't do a number of things that council could do or that an investigative inquiry could do. And so, so we're limited there. I think there will always be an instance that comes up and says, that you look at the scope and say, we really want to look at that, but we don't have the expertise for it. And at that point, we'd probably contract out for it.
That's a very different direction than I was asking about. Was not in the accounting standards or investigatory power. But what I see, when I talk about outcomes, is the attempt to almost do social, social science. So to evaluate substantively, kind of like, what are the benefits to society in the parks investments? And in some ways, I feel like we need that added capacity as council, right? We really should be able to have maybe more empiricals, measures of our policy is a, is a positive feedback loop for us. And I remember saying, and Councilwoman Smith, you might remember, when we first created the Gender Equity Commission at this table and we were voting for it, I said, I want a gendered analysis of the LERTAs. I want us to look at what our financial incentives are through a gendered lens. Who's benefited and who's paid or been displaced by the economic incentives that we've created? I really think we need that capacity. Sometimes we work with, you know, graduate students at CMU or Pitt. We've had system synthesis assignments. We've kind of looked to the kind of social analysts that we're very fortunate to have just in the region or in the city. And so while I want it, I'm, I'm not sure that your office has it. And while I can imagine a Controller's Office and how much fun that would be to be able to look at the public policy impacts. Yeah, I just, there's some caution here.
I'll say, as someone who spent seven years at a think tank, I, I understand where you're coming from. The first thing I'll point to is our joint relationship with, that we have with the Citizen Police Review Board, who do have expertise in, in police, police work and evaluating police, police performance, et cetera. And we, the city voters codified that. And we do a joint audit with the CPRB of the Police Bureau. Our goal is to do it every two to three years. We'll start that later this year, early next. So those partnership opportunities do exist in the city. And with the Special Reports section that I mentioned earlier in my remarks, there are experts in Pittsburgh on literally every topic. So we're, I don't want to get into the details because we haven't actually formally launched the report investigation, but we are working on some housing issues and working with our nonprofit and policy experts that exist within the city of Pittsburgh. So making sure that we're just taking advantages of the resources and the, the brain power, for lack of a better word, that already exists in the city is something that is a, is certainly a priority. And, you know, recognizing too, that to Michael Controller Lamb's point, that we, we don't have all the answers, you know? I don't, I don't think that anyone expects us to. And recognizing when we have a deficiency in a particular area and then looking for outside experts, et cetera. And I will also just mention that a lot of learning happens in, among our researchers and our auditors because it's impossible to have area expertise in absolutely every function of city government. So a lot, an extensive part of the auditing process is evaluating, and of the report process too, what other cities do and, you know, trying to become an issue area expert-ish when, when beginning that work. But yes, I mean, nothing is going to be perfect. Nothing will be in total agreement with every single person that sits in this body. But utilizing our, our, the intellectual capacity that we have here in the city is, is a priority. You saw that with Parks Tax Trust Fund and with the housing report that we are trying to start now.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll save that discussion for when we have the actual post-agenda. I understand it's in December because certainly I, I have begun to comb through it. And I do feel like that will be a robust discussion. And so again, I, I am eager to see us have this kind of analysis of the big, big policies that we've enacted, right, financial and otherwise. And so I'm both excited but attentive about seeing it at the Controller's Office because it says big shift. It's a big shift, so it'll be a big shift in your skill sets. Luckily, as you say, we have a lot of regional expertise and we, we utilize them here as well at City Council, right? But the, the feedback loop happens here at the table. That's, that's what we're here for. Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I just, for the public who may, might be interested, the post-agenda called by Councilwoman Warwick is scheduled for December, Monday, December 4th at 1:30. Councilman Wilson?
It says here, engineering as one of the core services. Can you talk about what you're referencing there?
So our, the engineering section is basically our inspectors.
Oh, you're not referencing, actually, this was made by our, our budget people, but, yes.
Basically our inspectors. So our inspectors, you know, we, we have, we inspect the materials the city buys. We inspect the contracts the city enters into. You know, for a good part of the year, we, our, our guys are out on the street measuring streets that are getting paved and matching that up to the asphalt that we buy to make sure that we're, you know, that the, that the money we're spending is going where it belongs. So we also, you know, look at any of the projects that the city contracts to build, you know, making sure that those invoices are consistent with respect to the wages that are being paid and to the products that are being used. So it's just really a, it's an inspection function.
Yeah. What's another term for that? It's, I'm trying to think. What's the role? What, what are the titles of the people who do those positions?
Well, they're inspectors. I mean, well, Ray is, you know, Ray is, is, we actually honored Ray earlier this year as a 50-year employee of the city of Pittsburgh. He's an engineer. He's a certified engineer. And he oversees that, Ray Jablinowski, he oversees that department. And he's got three inspectors who go out and inspect everything that, you know, we don't inspect every single invoice. It would be too cumbersome to do that. If we had more inspectors, we'd do more. But, but, but a lot of the materials that we buy and a lot of the projects that we complete are inspected. Not, not for the building, you know, we, the Public Works inspects their projects, but we kind of inspect the, the, the payments and to make sure that we're getting what we paid for.
Like the streets, do you go out and you inspect the type of asphalt that we're purchasing and?
They'll go out, after the street's milled, they'll go out and measure it. They'll figure out whether that we're talking about, you know, a base coat and two and a half inches of asphalt and whatever, whatever that product is. And then we keep that math. When the invoice comes in, we check it against what we measured to make sure that we're getting what we paid for. They're out every day in an electric vehicle.
I like how you made that point. All right. So maybe I missed this. I don't think I did. How do we get to negative two when we have 58? Oh, there's 58 full-time, negative two, but I see a lot of pluses.
So some positions have been altered to reflect, more accurately reflect the work that's being done. But yeah, there, there wasn't more space. I actually asked for two more inspectors and there wasn't space in the budget.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand. So they're, so like plus Assistant Controller, minus, oh, minus. Oh, okay. I just can't, I'm, I have glasses, but apparently I don't have good ones. Those are not all pluses. Okay. So that adds up to negative two. Gotcha. I didn't know. I thought I was looking at maybe some retirements that happen and all of a sudden you're changing position names or something. Okay. All right. That makes sense. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. And I just got to say, this is probably the hardest thing for me to sit through, these numbers and budget stuff. It's not me, but, but I do want to say that we had a good sidebar conversation with our Director McDevitt and hearing about us working together. And I thought, why don't we try to get something scheduled where we can all go over the budget together with you, the mayor's office, council members that want to come in, we'll, we'll figure out the schedule with everyone and try to come up with a budget that makes, helps us to avoid going into Act 47 in two years. I want to make sure that we are not a part of that. That's something we definitely agree on, something we agree on. I'm certain the mayor's office would not want to go down that road as well. So I think together, if we all sit down, we'll get that scheduled as soon as possible before we start making our amendments and doing things. Okay? That's it for me. Any final words or anything you'd like to say before you leave?
No, just really thank you very much. We, you know, I've always had just a great interaction with City Council and I appreciate the cordiality and the professionalism with which we've dealt with all the issues.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to both of you. It's been really great working with you, looking forward to working with you. Although I'm not the person to call the Controller's Office all the time. You know that. But I will say that I trust what you bring to the table and know that whatever you've done, you've done your best with it. So thank you for all the work that you do. And I would love to help you get more inspectors because I would like more to be able to look at some of the things where, somebody said to me one day, she worked at Pendon, she lived in Mount Washington, and she came over. She goes, well, it's not this deep and it's not supposed to be this. And I said, I don't even know what you're talking about. But then she said, call the Controller's Office. So I just want to thank you for the work that you do because it's, goes far beyond, you know, what people might, might realize that you do. So thank you. Can you tell us what the next budget hearing?
Yes. The next budget hearing is Tuesday, the 21st at 10 a.m. Yes, the next budget hearing is Tuesday, the 21st at 10:00 AM with the Housing Authority and the Pittsburgh Parking Authority.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to recess?
I can't, motion to recess.
Second.
Second.
On favor, meetings recessed, thank you.